I'd like to call the November 16th meeting of the Francis Marion Board of Trustees to order. I'd like to welcome you all here. And, uh... I'd like to ask, can you just get the roll call?
Mr. Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Dr. Major?
Here.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
How are you? So, yeah, we'll call through then. Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
Mr. Tarson?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Keelis?
Keelis is here.
Ms. Silverman? Mr. Madsen Tyre?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
This is Frank Elmore.
Here.
Hang on Frank.
All right Frank, we just called the roll and we have you as President.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a forum and the President's been notified, um, as required by the Freedom of Information Act. This time we would ask you to review the minutes from the August 3rd meeting. Are there any corrections or additions?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
U.S. nay. Motion to approve. We'll go to committee reports. Uh, the Executive Affairs Committee met, um, before our committee meetings and there was several items discussed but no action was taken. The Academic Affairs and Accreditation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a busy but very productive meeting today. Um, we started off, Doc, Associate Provost Waters gave us the rundown on enrollment management. Uh, the current enrollment for the fall 2017 stands at 3,786 students. It's down slightly from last year but there are 690 freshman students. Ninety-two percent of that freshman class comes from South Carolina and 45% are from the PD. And currently applications stand at about 2,000 which I believe is a little more than 10% over the previous year. So, things are looking good going forward. Uh, we currently have 221 undergraduates and 61 graduate students planning to graduate coming in December. And Perry Wilson is retiring at the end of the year after serving seven years as the Director of Admissions. And the department is announcing that Jamie Freeman from UNC Pembroke will be joining at the end of November as the new Director of Admissions. Uh, after that, we talked briefly about the SACS accreditation process. Documents including the compliance report were submitted to SACS in September. As part of that, uh, as part of that accreditation process, uh, the school's required to approve or come up with a new quality enhancement program. You have Resolution 0717 that was included in the packet. Um, it's a resolution to approve the new quality enhancement program called PEAK. Uh, that stands for Professional Experience and Knowledge. And, uh, Dr., um, Dr. DiVincenzo, uh, from the Marketing Department, gave us a bit of a rundown on it. Uh, it's a program that complements the REAL program which was started several years back as an experiential learning program. A lot of that's based on student travel and getting experience outside the university. Uh, this one's focused more towards internships and also a focus on professionalism. Uh, basically, um, the program aims to foster career-oriented skills and experiences to help students prepare for the job market. And, um, again, we have that resolution. I'd like to, uh, I'd like to have the board review that and approve.
Okay. You have Resolution 717 approving the new quality enhancement program that Francis Marion required, um, by SACS for reaffirmation of accreditation in 2018.
So...
He made his motion, didn't he?
All right, yeah. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor, signified by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is approved.
Additionally, Mr. Chairman, there's another resolution that we have from the Committee. Uh, this is Resolution 0617. It involves a new program of basically approving a Bachelor of Science in Healthcare Informatics. Um, we heard from Dean Hari, Roger Goplin, from the Business Department. Uh, basically, the program involves two aspects of managing digital data. Uh, one is basically interpreting and managing, uh, data in terms of healthcare. The other is building systems to manage it. Uh, there are two tracks. The information management track has a heavy focus on economics. Um, also, it'll be housed in the Business Department with a number of health service, uh, health science classes and also cut across several other disciplines. The information technology has a strong computer science component as well. Um, basically with the growth of the local medical providers, uh, this is a important program that'll give our students additional opportunities. There is no other program like this in this region of the state and it wouldn't really require any new resources. I think only one additional class would be offered and it has an inter, it's an interdisciplinary major. So, uh, with the Board's approval, we'd like to move forward with the resolution on 0617.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. This is Resolution 617 approving the Bachelor of Science in Healthcare Informatics. Um, any questions, uh, any discussion regarding the motion passing the resolution? Not all in favor, signified by aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Resolution is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report. We had a lot of other things to discuss but I think we'll share some of that in the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Developing Alumni Reports.
I filled in for Chairman Elmore. Frank, we missed you today but we had a good report and Daryl always does a good job putting it together for anybody to fill in.
Thank you, Daryl.
Uh, the main, I'm just gonna hit the highlights of what we discussed. Had a lot of good discussion but a new scholarship in memory of Brian Kelly who was the CEO of PD Electric Cooperative who passed away this past spring was established and more than 55,000 was raised to doubt. And I think there's been some promise of, of, um, some more to come. Um, Daryl added two new members elected to the FMU Education Foundation and they include Jeff Hilton who was class of 93 and he's an executive with Honda of South Carolina. And Carl Humphries who is the CEO of Hope Health who has been really involved and we've been really involved with Hope Health for a long time. Uh, two good new members. There are a great slate of shows and activities scheduled at the PAC and with more on the way. And they highlighted an event coming up, an intimate evening of songs and stories with Graham Nash scheduled for March 3rd. So, if you're interested, you need to go ahead and make your reservation, get your tickets. Tickets go fast and, um, looking for a sell out there. We also have added a new Director of Alumni Affairs, Lee Dodgery. Lee, welcome to us. I don't see him. Um, he joined the staff two months ago. He's also a graduate of FMU in 1989 and brings a broad experience to the position. We're lucky to have him. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Financial Affairs and Facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. Dr. Carter, the Financial Affairs and Facilities Committee met this afternoon, joined by Jay Kispert, Jonathan Edwards, Daniel Dukes. Uh, had a, had a busy meeting. Um, I've got somewhat of an abbreviated report just being a few months into our fiscal year and then Dr. Carter's gonna share some, some things in his report. Um, you should have, everyone should have a copy of the, uh, of the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2016, 2017 there on your desk. I'm sure you've probably not had a, a great deal of time to look at them but I'll just kinda go over a few of those there if I could. Uh, the university has completed its 2016, 2017 audit and has met all requirements of the Comptroller General's office. Uh, the auditing firm has issued an unqualified opinion indicating that they have no reservations concerning the financial statements. The financial statements fairly represent the financial position of Francis Marion University. This is the best opinion that an auditing firm can issue. Simply said, we received a clean audit. There were no findings related to the financial statements and the audit firm proposed no adjustments to the statements. There were no major GASB standard changes that were implemented, implemented this year and the audit reported no instances of non-compliance with accounting standards. Federal grants were also audited in accordance with federal regulations and were given a separate opinion by the auditor as is required under current guidelines. These financial statements are found at the back of the audit report. There were no deficiencies reported and the auditor's opinion deemed us to be in all material respects in compliance to the various compliance requirements of the federal grants. So that's, uh, I think this represents the 14th or 15th year that we've had a, had a clean or unqualified opinion which I would say is pretty special. Um, next, let's look at the review of the budget summary. Everybody should have received that and an email from Kim back in early November so perhaps you've had a chance to look it at. Uh, revenues and inflows, summer two revenues totaled $817,000. Uh, 18.1 million or 97.3% of our fall revenue has been received. Total operating revenue received thus far totals $19.8 million. All appropriations, 16.3 million have been received. The PVA retirement credit has been received as an expense credit, not as a revenue inflow on our first quarter retirement contribution statement. Auxiliary and designated revenues received year-to-date are primarily related to student fee collections and dining and bookstore contractual revenue related to fall 2017 activity. Capital and debt-related funds received are related to interest earnings on capital project funds held by the university. Total revenues are budgeted at 87.7 million of which we've received $52.3 million. On the next page, under expenses, as of the report date, our general funds were 28% expended which is in line with the expected percentage expenditure as of the reporting day. On that page, employee headcount, our total employee headcount sits at 502 and FTE at 448. The four-year change is 15 on headcount and 11 and a half on FTE. Lastly, uh, the next page relating to financial aid, there was no change in our financial aid estimate since our August meeting. Financial aid is currently projected at $53.3 million for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and we continue to run at about an 87% range of students receiving some form of financial aid. Uh, that concludes my reports. If anybody has any questions, we'll be glad to entertain them. I think not, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Just Student Affairs and Athletics.
All right. Well, Student Affairs and Athletics Committee met this afternoon and, um, we had a very good meeting. Um, our VP of Student Affairs, Teresa Rainey, gave a report on the many activities that have taken place this fall semester. Um, Welcome Week and Freshman Move-In Day was a great success. Um, it was hot. But, um, in spite of that, they had good participation. There was, um, Hispanic Heritage Event was held this semester which was very successful. Leadership FMU, which is a well-established program, is, um, just about finished with their work this semester. They had 20 participants and they'll be in event to recognize those graduates later this month on November the 20th. The Student Leadership Conference in conjunction with, um, Student Government Association was held on October 21st and was very well attended. And then, um, this year they, there was also Civility and Unity Week that was celebrated November 6th through the 9th. We also heard, uh, received a report from our Student Government Association President, Mercedes Smith, who I might add is also a McNair Scholar. Um, she, um, provided us with an update of the student government activities and accomplishments so far this semester. Fall elections resulted in seven new senators joining the SGA Senate, so it is now operating in full capacity which is good. This week marks Student Government Association Week which has had a number of activities designed to raise collaboration and awareness about student government among the student body and will culminate tonight at the basketball game with a special promotional event, um, for the first 20 students who show up in Patriot gear. Homecoming plans are underway which is scheduled for February the 10th, 2018. And Student Affairs is also making plans for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on January the 11th. We received a, a report also on athletics from our AD, Murray Hartzell. Um, he reported that thus far the, the new Adidas contract with the, um, university has been very positive with a, um, bottom line positive impact of $35,000 and change so far this year. Also, a significant in-kind contribution, um, has been, um, received from Promotion, Rehab and Sports Medicine, um, which will equal a value of approximately $12,000 of in-kind services including free testing for all of our student athletes. Um, this, um, uh, also we had 23 student athletes representing 10 different sports who received 2017 Division II ADA Academic Achievement Awards which requires a 3.4 grade point average. And then, um, 15 fall student athletes have been named to their respective, um, Peach Belt Conference All Academic Teams. And that requires, um, that you be a starter or significant contributor to your team and achieve at least a 3.3 cumulative GPA and have completed at least one full academic year. So, we're very proud of our student athletes and their many accomplishments. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Good. Any questions? All right. Thank you. We'll move on now to President's Report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First of all, as, as everyone's heard, we're making reports at this point. It's been a good academic year. We're off to a terrific start. I do want to take a minute or so and, and look beyond just the audits and the financial reports to tell you that the, um, the financial health of the, of the university is superb. We, we've never really been in better shape financially, whether we're talking about, uh, whether we're talking about unobligated contingency funds or whether we're talking about maintenance reserve or, or development foundation accounts or our endowment. The truth of the matter is, this university's in great shape financially. The, the obligation, of course, will be to continue in the years ahead to keep it in that great shape. And I just want to say a word or two about, about why it's in good shape. One of the reasons why I think the university enjoys the financial status it has is that this board made a decision long ago that we weren't gonna borrow money to build buildings. That we were gonna go out there and we were gonna raise money privately and look for matches and try to get state appropriations. And we were trying to get all the money together before we began breaking ground on the building to raise it. That was the case with the Center for the Child. That was the case with the Nursing Building. That was the case with the Performing Arts Center and the Center for Health Sciences downtown. So, when our kids pay tuition, their tuition's not saddled with debt service related to buildings that we'll be paying off into the future. It also means that we haven't had to draw down reserve accounts to make those payments on buildings either. The absence of debt service means that instead of being 20 to 30% higher in our tuition, we're right at the bottom of the heap in the tuition. It's a sound financial practice and I hope it's a practice that we can, we can continue to stay directed towards in the years ahead. The other thing I want to tell you and I, again, Hari's here and Ruth is here and some of our deans, our deans and chairmen do a marvelous job, um, managing their budgets. They're careful with expenditures. They understand quite honestly that, uh, that being prudent in the commitment of expenditures means that we can charge our kids less tuition to attend this institution. And, and I'm very, very proud of our deans and chairs, proud of our vice presidents. I'm proud of the flat, of the fact we have a very flat administration. As all of you know, there are two people in the, in the President's Office, me and Kim, and Kim from time to time opines that she's not so sure that it's necessary for me to be there. So, but, but, but in truth, the financial status of the university's in great shape and I want to thank this board for ensuring that it stays where it is and my deans and chairs as well. Thank you for passing the informatics proposal today. Thank you for passing our PEAK program proposal today. Hari in the School of Business will do a marvelous job with that, that healthcare informatics degree. I think, I think it's gonna be a very, very popular degree for men and women that are, have a strong interest in, in empirical data, computer science and really want it to be vocation, occupation-directed. And I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about the PEAK program as well. Uh, Marie's worked on that PEAK program for months now. And it's, it's a position where it's not only gonna do a great job with regard to satisfying our SACS requirement but it's gonna be a terrific complement to experiential learning for our students here. We will enroll our first EMP class in January. Man, we'll, we'll begin our first doctoral program in January and Ruth tells me that she's comfortable that we'll begin with 15 students in that class and then next August we'll add to that and continue to add. And I, I, again, I, I, I always thank my, my colleagues in, in the College of Health Sciences for everything they do but, uh, but having a doctoral degree program here is a, is a very unique thing for this university. And I want everybody around this room to know that doctoral program wouldn't be here without Ruth's leadership. Thank you for that. Uh, SGA, you know, you, you took my thunder away in introducing Mercedes and, and, but Mercedes has done a marvelous job so far as Chairman of SGA. She's, she's got that, the SGA group together moving in a positive direction. They have, they have two dozen initiatives underway, all of which are intended to improve the university. Everything from quality of food services to better working hours for the grill to looking continually at the honor code, to looking at legislation, to integrating the, uh, University Programming Board and, and SGA to, to a variety of different things. And on top of that, I think Mercedes is planning a trip to New York for, for SGA and that, and that process. I'm very, very proud of her leadership. I'm proud of what we're accomplishing in that. And yes, Mercedes is not only the first SGA president who's a McNair Scholar, but more important to me, she grew up in Marion, South Carolina in the shadow of this university. So, she's truly one of our own in a variety of different ways. Thank you for what you do. Now, let me get a little tough with the board for a second. Homecoming's February 10th. Homecoming has gotten better and better every year and, and Mercedes SGA tells me that the homecoming parade is gonna be unbelievable this year. The one thing we would all like to see more of, faculty, staff, students, is my trustees on Homecoming Day. So, I want you guys to know, you have a standing invitation on February 10th and the homecoming parade starts at noon and it gets wilder and wilder after.
We can have our own float?
Do we have a float?
Trustee float.
The trustee float is a wonderful idea, you know, as long as it ends on campus and it doesn't end in Eppingham. So, but it tr, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Tracy, am I understanding that you're willing to take on the obligation to look together and present?
I think I just volunteered, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, from the ridiculous back to the sublime, okay? Uh, speech therapy is, is coming along superbly well. Uh, Chris has, again, done a marvelous job with that. Peter's done a marvelous job. Frida's done a terrific job. We're in the process of hiring faculty, purchasing equipment at this point, soundproofing the rooms necessary in the health science to accommodate that. And we have our final accreditation visit, Chris, in April. And we expect to have 20 students enrolled in August in that first class. So, again, we're, we're, we're very, very excited about that. Uh, let me say a word about mechanical engineering. We haven't talked about that yet. That's, that's up next. We, we, we've asked the, um, we've asked the Department of Physics, Astronomy and Engineering to pull together a group to do a feasibility study. Uh, the provost is, is working with them to complete that feasibility study. Peter, we should have that feasibility study finished, the first part of the new year?
Yes, yep, in January.
In January. So, we'll be, we'll be coming back to you during the course of, of the next year after we go to the faculty with, with permission to, to add that degree. And for next year, not this coming, uh, budget year, but for the next year, that will be one of our, our operational funding requests for the General Assembly. We'll, we'll ask for, for $500,000 as seed money to begin that mechanical engineering degree. I'm obligated to tell you, I would tell you in any event, I'm not exactly obligated, but, uh, we, the, the, the Physics and Engineering, Astronomy Department have been hiring, um, have been hiring engineers, industrial engineer faculty with some mechanical engineering capabilities. So, we've already started segueing towards that mechanical engineering and I think we, we feel pretty optimistic about that. The one thing I would like to, to ask the board to consider, when we developed industrial, we told you then that we would look, as we developed in industrial, that mechanical is the next. So, I'll tell you now, you know, ask the indulgence of the board, as we begin to move to develop mechanical, we'll start to look at chem, uh, chemical engineering on the other side of mechanical. So, we do engineering, we do mechanical, we do chemical and we'll be just about ready for a full school of engineering here which would, which would be terrific. Uh, two things to announce, the, uh, two of our, our student groups and their travel and I just want the board to be aware of this. Our Honors Ambassadors will, uh, will go to, uh, to Ireland this year to visit our new Irish partners. They'll do that during spring break. And, uh, and Chris and Chris Kennedy and, and Chris Johnson will take them to, or John Tuttle, I'm sorry. Chris Kennedy and John Tuttle, uh, will take them to, uh, will take them to Ireland. And then our McNair Scholars this year will go to, uh, will go to France. They'll go to Strasbourg and Montpellier. And Chris Johnson will lead, uh, will take that group of students. It'll, it'll be a good year for our premier students on this campus relative to their international travel. And then I would be remiss if I didn't, as my last item, remind you, there's gonna be a torrid basketball game tonight that starts at 6:00 and we'd love to see some smiling, trusty faces at that game. That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Carter, for your continued leadership. Um, there is no unfinished business, a new business. I think we have a, a report from the Nominating Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Davis to pass out our information so we'll have that.
Thank you.
slate of officers. For Chairman, Mr. Robert Lee. For Vice Chairman, Dr. Randy Dozier. And for Secretary, Mr. Floyd Keels. Um, I'd remind the board that these are being placed on the table at this meeting and we'd actually vote on them at the March 1 meeting, uh, at the next meeting. In addition to those nominations, we also would like to propose a change in the bylaws and be, the bylaws be amended as follows. Item four, Officers of the Board. The Officers of the Board of Trustees shall consist of the Chair, the Vice Chair and the Secretary. The election of officers in 2017... The election of officers in 2018 shall be held at the quarterly winter meeting. After 2018, officers' elections will be held at the spring meeting. New officers will assume office on July the 1 in the subsequent to their election. Each officer is elected for a three-year term, three years, or until a successor is elected or qualified. In the event of a vacancy in the Chair's position, the Vice Chair will succeed to the position for the remainder of the term. All other vacancies in the office may be filled at any meeting time. A Chair may not serve consecutive three-year terms. The other officers may serve multiple terms. And effectively, this change proposes two things. It will change the term of officers from two years to three years, and set the beginning of the term at July 1, the start of the university's fiscal year. We're making these recommendations. We think both of these make logical sense for the board, will enhance the continuity of the board. You know, the Chair currently serves two years, but first year's typically an indoctrination period, establishing committees and the like, and then a year has passed and you've got one year left. And as we all know, we meet four times officially. It doesn't give the Chair much time to get much else accomplished, so we feel like this will do a lot in enhancing that. And we feel like it's better to run the Chair and the officers' terms with the fiscal year as opposed to the calendar year that we have now. So those are the two primary changes that we're asking for. And again, these will stay on the table for your review and any comments you want to make, and we would vote on those at the March meeting as well. That's the report from the Nominations Committee.
We will accept those, and then this will be back on the agenda for our next meeting. There, is there any other new business today? There is no need for an executive session, so if there's no other business and no objections, with a reminder that there's a basketball game tonight, and please try to attend, it'll be a lot of fun. And if there are no objections, we'll stand adjourned.